Yep, I can hear you.
Excellent. Karen, did you get the note from Frank?
Uh.
Let them in, so should be good to go in a minute.
Hello.
Hooray. The gang's all here. Um, is Scott F. here also, or will he be here, Leila?
So, thanks. Um, he is going to try. Uh, he had actually conflict with another city. He's having some hearings tonight, so I'm gonna do my best to fill in.
Okay.
He isn't able to make it.
And, um, is Bob Karbo available?
He is here, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, sweet. Um, well, it looks like we have enough people to start this meeting. Um, I'm gonna call the meeting of the, uh, Manzanita Planning Commission to order. It's 4:01 PM on September 18th. For the record, Lee Hiltbrand and Frank Squillo are both absent and excused. We have a quorum to proceed. Um, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our, oops, August 21st meeting. Are there any additions, subtractions, corrections that need to be made in these minutes?
Karen, could you look at item number five, the staff update of the transportation system planning? It looks to me like we are missing a word, or we have a word that has been added.
Yeah, looks like we have an "and" "the" are extra. And, uh, Leila's name is misspelled. Amen.
Interesting misspelling.
Let's, let's fix that one.
We'll fix that. I think we dropped the "up" "the."
Um, okay. All right, anything else? Thank you for that. Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So, will.
Was that John?
Phil.
Phil, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Uh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I didn't hear a no, so if they're approved. Okay, um.
Okay.
Do we have any members of the audience here today? Any people in the public? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, Karen, we have a total of 18. That includes staff and the planning commission.
Okay, great, thank you.
And if, we have one hand raised when you're ready for that.
Sure. As long as it's not, uh, I, yeah, I'll go ahead and recognize Mr. Gunpenberger. As long as it's not related to any items on the agenda today. You wanna unmute yourself?
No, it's not related to the items on the agenda. I want to address something that came up in the Land Use Planning Commission in regards to Manzanita Pines, where the developer wants to have the height restriction removed, and you can go to 38 and a half feet. I am vehemently opposed to that, uh, uh, idea. Even though in his presentation, he shows where you wouldn't see the building because of the height of the dune. That doesn't matter. What happens down on Third Street, in that big sand pile, which is R2? If that person wants to now have a 38 and a half foot high, do we want that in downtown? It's a slippery slope if that's approved to be 38 and a half feet in those apartments. There's a lot of land out there. If you want that many units, build two-story buildings. It is not in the best interest of Manzanita to go to 38 and a half feet tall. That's my comment. And I hope you listen to it. And I hope you do not approve that part of the, of the program. The apartments are needed, work of housing is needed, we all know that. We just don't need it to be 38 and a half feet tall.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Gunpenberger, would you come back, um, to the meeting when the, uh, application for Manzanita Pines is actually submitted and ready to be heard? Um, right now, all we have is a proposal that isn't firm yet. So I would, um, love to include your comments as part of that record and, and hear it as part of that hearing.
You can count on it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, okay. Any, any other hands raised?
Uh, that's the only hand I had raised, Karen. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, okay, then we'll move on to, um, the agenda items, which, um, I mean, the, uh, we're, we're looking at the extension of the conditions for development on, um, the Steeplejack properties on La Nida. Um, I'm gonna read through the whole thing, even though it's not likely that we're gonna run into, um, the need for all of this today, but I wanna make sure it's all on the record so that it's clear. Um, this is the time and place set for public hearings in the matter of a request to extend conditions of approval of design review for two adjacent properties. One for a retail space and three-unit hotel on Lot 4, Block 14, Manzanita, um, Manzanita Beach subdivision. I'm gonna call that the West property, I think that's correct. And the other is for, uh, Restaurant on Lot 3, Block 14 in the Manzanita Beach subdivision, and I'm calling that the East property, uh, because they're adjacent to one another. The decision to approve or deny these requests will be based on criteria in Section 4.158 of the Manzanita, Manzanita zoning ordinance. The specific, specific criteria are summarized in the staff reports and will be reviewed at this hearing. Because both properties are requesting extensions, I should say, the applicant is requesting extensions, um, on each property based on the same criteria, without a objection, I would like to hear these matters concurrently. If at any time an issue arises that would show cause to separate the hearings, we'll stop and proceed one at a time. Any objections? Okay. Um, the combined hearing is now open. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward the approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note, in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to this request. Note that an issue which may be a basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing of this case. Such issues must include state, specific statements or evidence to allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. These cases will proceed with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, comments from the public, uh, in favor and those opposed to the application. The commission's staff, uh, and participants may direct questions to those who testified. The applicant will be entitled to rebuttal if needed. Um, generally, we like to keep our applicant to 20 minutes to make their presentation. All other speakers should limit your comments to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. If someone has already expressed your thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. If you sent a written response to the proposal, please don't repeat your comments. Um, Scott, did we receive any written comments?
Uh, we have not received any written comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, a participant may request the opportunity to present additional evidence on the application. If such a request is made, it'll be up to the commission to determine if the hearing will be continued to a date and time certain, or if the record will be kept open for the submission of additional evidence or testimony. If it's kept open, the record will be, uh, open for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter applied to the, afforded to the applicant. Uh, first, let's ask the audience if there were any objections to the notice that was sent regarding these cases. Any, uh, objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear or can, and consider these cases? Okay, I'm gonna ask the commissioners, uh, if there are any declarations of conflict or bias, ex parte contact or site visits by any members of this body. I'll start with Phil.
Uh, no conflict, no bias. Uh, I have, uh, visited the site.
Okay, thank you. Um, John, you wanna unmute yourself and?
Yeah, same as Phil. I have no conflicts and no biases. And like everybody else in town, I've walked by there, so.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, no conflict, no bias. Uh, I've done more than just walked by it. I've tried to peek through the fence, um, to see the progress. But other than that, I, I know nothing about it, other than what's before us in the packet.
Thank you. How about you, Bert?
Uh, no conflict, no bias, and I've walked by a million times, I think.
Yeah, okay. Um, for my part, um, I also have walked by the site, peeked through the, um, screening as best I could, several times. Um, I have no conflict of interest, I have no bias, and no ex parte contact, um, with the applicants or others. Okay, um, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear these matters by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias? Raise your hand.
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's move forward then. Um, Bob, are we gonna hear from you? Or, uh, who's, who's gonna give us an overview of what you're asking for?
Um, I'll, I'll turn over Brody to lead the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, sorry, I don't know if anyone can hear me. My camera seems to not wanna tilt down. But, uh, in any case, thank you very much for, for having us back. Uh, appreciate your consideration in this matter. Following our, um, approval late last year, we went out to bid with our chosen contractor. We've chosen to, to do lots of jobs with Swinderton Construction. You've probably seen their banner if you walk by the site. Um, they, they went out to, uh, to bid to the various subcontractors. Um, and they started getting, uh, responses back in February, late February, early March timeframe. But they had very, very few local contractors, uh, respond and wanna participate in the construction, um, project. There were a number of reasons for that, um, but, um, none more so than it was really important to us to, to, to loop in local contractors, contractors that are familiar with coastal construction, um, and then also have the same high standards that, that we do. So, we have since, um, talked through Swinderton, um, uh, and worked with them to, to work with a local, uh, contractor who has, uh, just started going out to, to bid with local, uh, subcontractors. Um, we believe that, uh, that, uh, he's going to be the, the right one for, um, to, to kinda oversee this, the, the project. Um, but it has taken us, uh, substantially longer, uh, to get through this process than we anticipated. Um, and so, um, while it is not ideal that, uh, we're asking for this extension, um, it's necessary to, to get the right people on board and make sure that the project, uh, is built the way that I, I, I believe that we all, all wanna see it. Um, so that's the reason why we're asking for the extension today.
Leila, I, um, do you wanna deliver a little report? Then we'll go with, um, questions from the commission to either afterward.
You bet. And it is, it is a little report. Um, so both of these applications are initially heard on September 19th, 2022. At that meeting, the planning commission approved with conditions the restaurant on September 19th, and a notice of decision was issued on September 26th. Uh, the planning commission did request additional information for the West lot, um, in particular related to the hotel and some parking, um, concerns. That hearing was held on October 17th and was approved at that unanimously by the planning commission, um, with conditions. And that notice of decision was issued on October 26th. Uh, the applicants are not requesting any changes to, uh, the conditions of approval, just simply an extension of that timeline. And so staff believe that, um, with that in mind, they have met all the conditions of approval required by the planning commission and those outlined, um, in Section 4.154. And so staff is recommending, uh, approval of that extension and also understands the, uh, complexity and cost, uh, implications of the construction market that we're in. So staff recommends that the planning commission approve, uh, the request for extension for 12 months.
Um, quick question, or, um, of either of you, are you requesting an extension of, uh, because they have different decision dates, a, a consistent decision or extension date?
That, that would probably be the most efficient, and we can do it based on the decision that you render today, or we can do it, uh, 12 months from the notice of decision for each application. Cause there is a 12-month, um, there is a one-month difference between the two.
Right, so I guess I could ask out of the applicant, what's, what's your preference in this matter? Just so we're all speaking on the same page.
Uh, that would be ideal, yes. If we could have a 12-month extension from the date of, uh, original approval, uh, approval for each property.
For each property, so a different, different extension, extension dates, correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, are there any questions from the commissioners to either staff or the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Uh, since I'm new to the commission and this process, I, I, I just generally, I don't, why do we put time limits on these decisions in the first place? Why? Why is there a 12-month deadline for doing the work that we've approved?
I'll, I'll take a stab at that answer. Um, and that is especially with the design review. Part of the review process is looking at how the project fits in with the surrounding neighborhood. And beyond, um, a year, potentially, um, the neighborhood could change significantly. And so we would be looking at, uh, a design that fits into the neighborhood as it is when built, not as it is when projected. So that, that's, I think that's the, my, my take on the criteria. Leila, does staff have a different idea?
Uh, no, I, I concur with that. I would say that with other codes I've had experience with, um, that timeline's been a little longer in some cases, a couple of years. Um, but not usually an extensive, um, length of time. I think the maximum I've seen is five years, but every city's different. But for those reasons that the chair explains, um, that's typically why we have a limitation.
Okay, uh, my only other question is, since I wasn't here when we decided this last year, and I don't see in, in the materials we've been given what conditions were attached to the original approval, I assume that none of them are themselves time-sensitive in any way?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Bert.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, is, uh, essentially, they need to start construction, uh, within the year, or do they need to apply for a building permit within the year?
Uh, the building permit needs to be issued within a year.
Issued. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
And then, sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Well, kind of following up on that, um, question. Has, um, and this is a question for the applicants. Have you guys proceeded with, um, any kind of documentation that, um, will be needed to make the building permit application? Or are you still trying to get pricing before you go down that road, or are we somewhere in between?
Uh, if I'm understanding, yeah, I, yes, we're, um, I would say that, you know, it's, it's always hard to kinda estimate, but I mean, we're 90, 90-plus percent ready to submit for, for a permit. Really, it's, it's finding the right contractor. And, uh, you know, until we have a signed contract in place with a G, uh, general contractor, we wouldn't wanna, uh, apply for a building permit. So, but yes, we, we anticipate that, um, very soon.
I've got one more question, and I'm, this probably, I'm not even sure who in this group could answer this question. Maybe Leila can, but, um, for a commercial project, the city of Manzanita relies on the county to review? Is that correct?
We actually, no, it's not. So the city of Manzanita has retained a building official that's certified to issue commercial permits, and so
Got it, okay.
Uh, we go through our own, um,
We go through our own, okay, cool.
Yes.
Thank you, Leila. Did your third party give you any indication of what their review period is?
Uh, Scott can probably answer that better than I can.
I can answer that, John.
Usually quick.
Leonard, yeah, Leonard is about two weeks, three weeks out, once I get him the plans.
Okay, well, so that's not gonna end up being an issue, probably.
No.
Regarding the
I, I don't see.
Continuance, okay.
Tom, did you want something else?
Yeah, excuse my continuing ignorance on this, but so it's, it's a year to get to apply for the permit. And then is there some time limit on the, the construction?
So, it's a year for the building permit to be issued, and then Scott can speak to, there's a timeframe for the construction start on building permit.
Uh, generally, when a permit's issued, Tom, um, it's 24 months is, is generally the longest unless they request at the time of application. If, if there's unforeseen circumstances that may draw it out a little longer, they can request that they have a little longer than 24 months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from the public to direct to staff or the applicant? Questions or comments in favor first? Any questions or comments in opposition? Okay, I don't hear any. So, um, any, I, I'm, give the applicant an opportunity for one last, if, if, if anything hasn't been clearly answered. Okay, I think we're good to go. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the discussion, and we'll invite discussion by the commission. Commission members may ask questions of the applicant or staff, but we are now at the point where the discussion will be limited primarily to commission members. Any, yes, go ahead, Bert.
Yeah, I just had a question of staff, really, is, um, you know, the, uh, this is a case where the, the duration of construction and from kind of the demolition to the completion will be many years, actually. And do we have any, uh, strategies around, uh, you know, artistic fencing or, or some other thing to, to give back to the community, uh, in order to, uh, make the condition uh, more delightful, uh, for the community during that, uh, uh, duration? Is, have, have we done those kinds of things before?
Uh, we did not require that, uh, uh, this, um, well, the planning commission, I should say, neither did staff recommend that as a condition of approval. I would defer to the applicant. Um, I've worked with Swinderton in the past, and they usually have that screening out that's there, so you see the guy pointing. Um, I'll defer to the applicant to address that question.
Uh, yeah, so, um, and I should introduce, I'm Brody Day, I'm the co-owner, uh, Steeplejack Burn Company. But, uh, what I would say is that, uh, yeah, we're, we're committed to being great neighbors. Um, I spend a, a lot of time down in Manzanita, and my business partner also has a home there. So, uh, we're part of the community, uh, day in and day out. We've, we've gotten a little bit of feedback from, from some of the neighbors when there was a big windstorm, and, and some of the, uh, zip ties, I think, came, came loose on the, uh, on the netting. And, and within a week, I was there and, uh, zip tied them all back up. So, um, we're accessible, we're, you know, we, we wanna be great neighbors. So, uh, you know, if, if the site is, is left in a, a situation that is either, you know, certainly not safe or just unsightly, we, we wanna fix it and remedy it, but, uh, we just need to know about it. So, that's where a good communication comes in, and, uh, and we'll, we'll make sure that it's right.
Any other questions, comments? Phil, go ahead.
Um, is Swinderton going to be associated with this project going on?
As of right now, no.
Okay, and you're not in, uh, anticipating any change with regards to the drawings, the specifications, or the presentation that you need?
That's correct. We have no plans to, to change what was approved.
Thank you.
Hey, John, did I see your hand?
Well, you did. Um, I was gonna sorta tag along on Bert's comment regarding beautification or, um, you know, uh, S-Swinderton and their little guy that points and holds, uh, whatever he's holding. That's great, but, um, one thing we might consider is putting up, you know, four, five, or six sheets of eight-foot plywood, and then see if we can get some locals to do some sort of, well, I'm not sure, we'll call it a, you know, just artwork. Um, I don't wanna block the entry to the site, and, um, Brody and Bob may just roll their eyes and go, nah, I don't think so. But, um, just something to consider. It, kind of a tag along to Bert's comment, and I've seen it done in other places, either spontaneously or planned, both.
Are you thinking you wanna try to make that a condition to attach to the extension?
No, I'm really not.
Okay.
Um, I'm just throwing it out there for Brody and Bob to rattle around in their heads.
Right.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I, I think that, uh, you know, in the past, like in our, our, our Broadway build-out, we did some, uh, local, uh, mural artwork. Now there, it was primarily to, to discourage graffiti artists from, uh, from graffiti in the site, uh, but, uh, I think that, uh, uh, I'll get with Bob and Dustin and see if there's something that creative we can come up with. I know that, uh, we're concerned about the wind through that site, and, uh, it, it makes me a little bit nervous to try to attach a, you know, sheet of plywood that doesn't, it's not wind resistant, um, on, on the fencing, um, but, uh, but I'll get with Bob and Dustin and, and see, uh, see what we can do.
Probably smart about the wind. It does occasionally blow here.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other comments, questions? I haven't heard anything to the negatory on this, um, application. Are, are there any objections to moving forward with a one-year extension to, uh, on each, each property from the original decision date? Um, could I have, um, Leila, do you have handy, or, um, maybe Brody, you have it, the, the decision date for each um, original application?
Yeah, I do. Um, the notice of decision for the restaurant was issued on September 26th, 2022. And the notice of decision on the, um, uh, hotel, I have a date of 10/26/2022.
That is the, uh, lot, Block 14, Lot 3? The East property is the hotel, is that, no, that's the West property, right?
Correct.
Lot, Lot 3 is West. I just need to keep this clear in my head that way. I'm not numerical, I'm directional thinker. Um, and that was, could you tell me that date again? September 27th? 2023?
Um,
26.
September 26th for the East lot, which is the restaurant. And then October 26th for the west lot.
I just want to write this down. So we're talking about extending to September 26th, 2024 for the west lot, which is lot three. Is that correct?
The east lot.
East lot, thank you, is lot three. And October 26th, 2024 for the west lot. Lot four. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so. Would someone like to put that in motion form?
I will move that we extend the applications for one year on each. And is there a way to do this with one motion or do you want to do this in two pieces?
Let's, let's do it in two. So there's, so there's
Okay, I will give it a shot.
Okay.
For the east lot, which I believe is lot three, um, I move that we uh, extend the application until September 26th, 2024.
Okay.
Exactly.
And that was Tom?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, is there uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay, we've got one date. Let's move ahead on the second one. Anyone want to give that one a shot?
I'll give it another shot.
All right.
I move that we extend the west lot, which is lot four uh, until October 26th of 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that one too.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, fantastic. See you next year.
Thank you.
Hardest part was getting the numbers right.
That's right.
Thank you all.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, well done. So item number C on our agenda is the, um, ju- just a general discussion on parks and open space definitions. And Leila, I think you were going to start with, um, what you've, what you've learned elsewhere, kind of put it all together for us.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I actually put together a PowerPoint to help walk us through, um, sorry, bear with me a second. Does anybody see that, my screen, okay? Anyone solve order these here so I can see you at the same time? Okay, um, so what we're here today, so this is a discussion draft, not really necessarily expecting us to get to a decision today. Y'all might want to take some time to ponder what is before you. And we can certainly come back next month and make a decision, but if you decide to get to a decision today, that's, that's great too. Um, I want to take a moment and thank the four planning commissioners that provided some direct feedback to staff. That was really helpful. Um, would have gotten this out sooner, but some of you sent it last week and we wanted to make sure to, you know, just incorporate all of that. So it took a little bit longer, um, to get this together. So we'll post this on the website to, under this planning commission meeting, those members of the public who want to look at this. Uh, so we spent some time reviewing the feedback, um, and then really considering the comments that, um, the planning commission made back at our meeting in August. Uh, we reviewed the definitions through our research and then many of you that supplied comments also gave us your highlighted examples that, uh, other cities from that last document we had that you liked. So we reviewed all of that, um, and then using our professional experience, we developed a proposed definition, uh, for you to just tear apart, um. So the good examples that were highlighted by members of the commission, and I won't, I won't read through these, uh, but just to remind folks, uh, there's some new ones brought in, but Gierhart, Astoria, Tillamook, Florence and Douglas County, one of the ones that were highlighted as good examples of descriptions of open space. Uh, thematically, kind of what I took away from those definitions and from the comments made by members of the planning commissions, that there's general guidance that it's not overly prescriptive. That the focus is on all kinds of open space, but there's an emphasis on natural areas and recreational areas that are focused on the enjoyment of the natural landscape. That there's some measure of flexibility for interpretation. And really by and large, pervious surfaces are excluded unless a trailer walkway through an open space or natural area is necessarily pervious. Or impervious, I should say. So kind of, again, these are just sort of themes pulled together from what we heard of your discussion and from what the commissioners that provide written comment. But really forest, I should say lawns, gardens and picnic areas kind of rose to the top. Areas that are generally contiguous, native or improved landscapes, environmentally sensitive and areas that are for both passive and active recreation. There are some comments relating to building setbacks or water body setbacks areas should be within open space if it's compatible with the purpose of that open space. I thought that was a good comment. Uh, pedestrian walkways, both pervious or impervious. Small recreational installations such as playgrounds, car courses, grills and fire pits were mentioned. And that consideration of the natural features and topography in areas that provide views, um, and then areas that are uh, protect environmentally sensitive areas. Um, it was pretty clear from, from your discussions and what we heard from other folks and then also what were in the definitions that we provided. Parking lots are not considered open space. Private setbacks or enclosures were, were brought up. Buildings, streets, alleys, parking, loading, storage or driveways were specifically mentioned, mentioned by a couple of folks as well as within definitions. Uh, parking lot, islands, parking lot, landscape strips and other similar isolated features regardless of whether they're landscaped or not. Um, the person that provided this comment also did suggest that maybe that's up for discussion. Um, parking drives, vehicular storage, unit porches, decks and storage sheds. So, you know, specifically attached to a unit, um, folks were pretty clear that that shouldn't count. Um, somewhere in between, so some folks said yes, some folks said no, but pools, recreation centers and meeting halls should not count as open space. Um, one person suggested that gazebos, cabanas, pavilions, meeting spaces, decks, sports courts and pools may be more appropriate for common areas or multifamily. And I just kind of wanted to remind folks that uh, our multifamily or apartment siding criteria does include language that allows for these to count. Um, but that is at the discretion of the planning commission. So you actually get to decide that. Um, so where a multifamily project comes in, um, our standards actually require that half of that is, is, um, usable by the residents. And that could be in the form of lawns, outdoor play areas, swimming pools, patios or where the commission permits indoor areas such as recreation rooms, meeting areas or an indoor swimming pool as examples. So again, that would be at the discretion of the planning commission and that's already in our code. So I think I generally heard, um, I did not hear from anyone who, um, uh, said otherwise, that we should remove the as a public or private park area or golf course. Um, but I think pretty emphatically that only if we define an open space. Um, we did get one suggestion, I put a lot of thought into this, uh, that making the open space provision to MZO 3.030, so that's, that's this guy. Um, because open space appears in, gosh, a couple typos here, other provisions of the ordinance. So I actually spent some time calling through the ordinance to see whether or not that in fact would be problematic and, um, you know, in my opinion, after spending that time reviewing the ordinance, I don't think it is. In fact, I think it actually, it helps to some extent. So I'm going to go through, um, where that exists, just so that we all have some measure of comfort around that. Um, but staff is, is recommending that we actually add a definition so that we amend the MZO, uh, section 1.030 definitions. Um, open spaces referred to in several places in the MZO, um, and I think having only a definition that applies to 3.030A will result in some confusion. I think we, so we'll spend some time reviewing where the term open spaces referred to in the MZO and it occurs in 15 places. Um, it's in the index. Uh, it's referred to under yard in, in, uh, the definitions. It's referred to, um, in the SRR zone and it's referenced in the purpose of the SRR. So setbacks and use of open space. And I don't, uh, it's also referred to here, which is the impetus for this whole discussion. And that's, um, references four and five. Um, it's referred to in section 3.040, commercial zone C1. Referred to in the description of the minimum landscape areas for commercial zone, it refers to usable open space and additionally identifies playgrounds, sitting areas or picnic areas. Um, I think it's important to note that these uses could be considered structures. And so the proposed definition, when we get to it, does not include a limitation on structures because it's defined within the MZO with particular instances. So here, as well as in the multifamily siding requirements. Um, permitted uses within the runway protection zone, so parks and open space makes an appearance here. I think given that homes are allowed in the RPZ, that any structure associated with a park such as a playground, picnic table or machine areas not incompatible with this definition or this provision of the code. Uh, it's referred to here in the supplemental provisions, um, which simply in section 4.030 simply refers to reductions in specific uses. So this is just saying, um, you have to meet the minimum ordinance requirements and references open space. And then 4.040 refers to the dual use of required open space. So again, just saying how open space can be applied with respect to the ordinance and that's references eight through 11. Um, reference 12, which you can see here is again the multifamily or apartment siding criteria. Just think it's important to keep this in the back of our minds as well. Um, it requires that 50% of the open space is usable and further defines additional uses not included in the proposed definition of open space. Um, but are also, we did not explicitly exclude them. So, um, again, because I think the planning commission has the discretion to determine whether or not some of these uses are or are not open space, that you can do so on a case by case basis. Uh, it's referred to again in section 4.136, the PUD standards and indicates what's required on a preliminary development plan, so indication of open space. Again, in the site evaluation criteria, open spaces referred to here again, um, taking the site evaluation criteria actually provides guidance to the applicant and the planning commission on how a site plan should be evaluated. And then finally, um, conditional uses, section five. So that provides planning commission the discretion to impose additional conditions necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding area and proposed use. So with that said, um, this is up for your discussion, but staff is recommending that you establish an actual definition that is applicable to the MZO by amending 1.030. The proposed definition has been Frankenstein from a lot of your input and again, looking at the other cities. That land area that is not occupied by buildings, parking area or other paved surfaces excluding walkways and trails refers to land that is generally contiguous and may be devoted for the purpose of pleasure, recreation, ornament, light and air, including the preservation of natural features or topography of a site, including protection of environmental and sensible areas. So I can leave this up. Um, I'm sure you have plenty of things to, uh, discuss about this and staff is at the ready to hear your thoughts and comments and, um, work towards a definition that everyone can live with.
Leila, can you go back to one of the earlier slides that had the, um, there was a definition that Douglas County had that I was, um, went by too fast for me. Okay, so that is, um, that, oh, parts of that definition have been incorporated into your suggested language and that was, that was going to be my suggestion. So yay. And then, um, it also referred to something called a park course. Can you tell me what that is?
Maybe John can tell us.
I can tell you about it.
That was his comment.
It's one of those courses, and I may not have even spelled it right there, um, but it's, um, one of those courses that I think they actually have one at the hospital in Tillamook or around, I could be wrong about this, but it's supposed to be for exercise where you, you know, walk or run down a trail and you stop and one of them you hop up on a log or something like that and one of them you do pull-ups or something and it, it's just an exercise course. Um, it's like having a little, uh, kindergarten thing every couple hundred yards or something.
Okay.
Um, and I've never, I mean, I've seen them, I've never used one, but it's the kind of thing that, that they are, um, they, they are inoffensive in a sense that they're kind of organic. And it's the kind of thing like a fire pit or yeah, and maybe, you know, playground equipment, more modern playground equipment that you see that are, that's more organic and less bent steel. Um, so it, it's those kinds of things that I think, um, you could consider as part of open space.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if that helps you.
It does. I, I know exactly what you're talking about now. Thanks. Uh, any other comments or questions? Just throw, throw the door open.
Well, I, I will comment, first of all, your Douglas County, um, definition was probably my favorite as well. Um, because the uh, pleasure, recreation, ornament, light and air for the general public. Uh, that's kind of reminiscent of a lot of open space that you hear in multiple communities, so.
Oh. Yeah, I like to too. I like to think in government, it's not plagiarism, we're just not reinventing the wheel.
Exactly.
Couple of you also referenced that and I'm going to see the reason why the words are being differently.
Yeah, it's like architecture, nothing, everything's been done in some way or another before, so you can't really copy anybody.
So, um, I Collaboration, I love it.
I, I do have, um, just a question about, um, in this definition, I agree that a land area that's not occupied by buildings, parking areas or other paved surfaces excluding walkways and trails. That makes sense to me, but what if, um, what if a, a multifamily project wanted to put in or, um, or a subdivision wanted to put in a tennis court? That would be considered a paved surface, but That would be considered a paved surface, but it's potentially open space for recreation, pleasure, interaction.
That's kind of at the planning commission's discretion, I think. Leila, you have to weigh in here.
Yeah, um, and specifically as it relates to multifamily, um, so, and I'm happy to make any adjustments to this, um, based on your feedback, but one of the things as I noted here is we didn't explicitly exclude. So in that case, I think usually with the review, um, either through a PUD process or through the multifamily process, I do think planning commission has a fair amount of discretion to make that determination. Um, but we can certainly, um, adjust this definition to ensure that that is more clear. Um, that's really, that's really up to you guys.
Yeah, I, I'd hate to put together, start, start putting a list of what, you know, or.
Right, that's, that's what we do want to avoid. The two notes, I mean, I like bocce ball and that's not pervious.
Good example. Good example of what croquet, bocce ball, uh, horseshoes are all things that are recreational and, you know, promote social interaction, but do not at all disturb the visual landscape. Um, enhance it and, you know, some would say enhance it like, um, but then you get into cabanas and gazebos and you can go either way on that.
Right. And I think I intentionally used the word pave, um, because paving to me refers to, again, this is an interpretive question, but asphalt. And the tennis court, it's actually not going to be asphalt, it's going to be a different type of, um, uh, impervious surface. It could potentially be pervious. There's certain kinds that actually I think are, so. Um, I think what by and large I've really heard from planning commissioners and one other definitions was we're not talking about parking lots or driveways here. But again, I'm happy to make any adjustments, um, based on your, your feedback.
Do we have a definition of buildings in the land use code? And so.
Yeah.
The gazebo or something like that would be considered a building?
Um.
We might have a definition of structure.
I know. So the definition of, oh, sorry Karen.
No, I was just saying we have, we had a lubricase years ago that where building and structure were used uh, interchangeably and, um, they shouldn't have been, so.
Yeah, and we lost, um, that was, that was pertaining to a deck.
Right.
Um, so the definition of building is a structure other than a mobile home built for the support, shelter or enclosure of persons, animals, chattels or property of any kind and having a fixed connection to the ground.
Is that structure or building?
That's building.
That's building, wow.
See if there's a structure definition.
There is.
What does that say? Yeah. Structure is, means anything constructed or built which requires location on the ground or is attached to something having a location on the ground, including covered patios, fences and walls, but not including normal plants and landscaping materials, paved outdoor areas, walks, driveways and similar improvements.
Well, it, it seems you don't necessarily want to exclude gazebos, you know, a small gazebo or something like that and certainly, um, you know, swimming pool or tennis court as part of a active recreational space, you certainly wouldn't want to exclude that, uh. So maybe you just need to sort out, you know, uh, perhaps it's as, uh, as defined in that other section, which was the multifamily section, refer to that or something. Uh, rather than get into the weeds here of trying to get every condition. Uh, but I would read this that you can't, you know, a tennis court wouldn't be allowed. Uh, or a gazebo wouldn't be allowed. And so maybe there just needs to be a little massaging somehow and refer it over to that other section and then kind of cover it there.
Bert, are you suggesting that tennis courts, swimming pools, gazebos fall in the planning commission discretionary camp?
I don't think so. Could you go to that one slide there, Linda? That has, okay, at least fifty percent of the required open space is usable by residents. That's a fairly common thing in multifamily development. This can be in form of lawns, outdoor play areas, swimming pools, patios or decks or where the commission permits even indoor areas, which I would agree, so, uh, uh, form of lawns, an outdoor player, you could say a tennis court's an outdoor play area. So, you know, it seems like it's, it's kind of covered here. The gazebo is not really covered. But then maybe that's, uh, at the commission's discretion.
Well, it, if you read this thing, I think all of it's the commission's discretion, including swimming pools, gazebos, cabanas. I, I think, uh, I could be wrong.
I read, well, this is, this is definitions, I read it as the first half, it's okay. And then, uh, it's the commission's discretion to permit anything on the indoor, which would be a recreation room, meeting room or indoor swimming pool, which makes sense. You know, the idea is generally, you know, open space. But many, uh, codes do allow, uh, for, you know, uh, meeting rooms of the like to count within that active, uh, uh, definition. So anyway, I think, uh, uh, I guess what I'm, I'm just a little worried about is that we might have something that, you know, that first one without alluding to this, uh, would preclude, you know, some of these, uh, you know, the tennis court and other stuff. So Leila, maybe you can figure out how to fix that.
But first, I, John, I do think you're reading that wrong. The, the limitation to the planning commission discretion is only the things after permits.
After permit?
Yeah, or where the planning commission permits indoor areas such as recreation rooms.
So, well, yeah, uh, um, uh, this is as it pertains to open space, which I don't believe the code specifically, well, I don't know the answer to that, Tom, um.
Well, this is where I'm getting confused. This provision says that for a multifamily or apartment, you, it has to be fifty percent has to be open space usable by the residents.
It's actually, yeah, so it, they, of the open space they're required to have, which let's, is in the case of a PUD where you're clustering, right, which is what we're focusing on, so forty percent of the land area has to be open space. Of that forty percent, fifty percent has to be usable by residents. And I think Bert said it very clearly, the planning commission's discretion is with respect to indoor uses.
So I'm reading.
Yeah, that's my read as well.
Okay.
And I think what I heard Bert saying is that we can, in terms of the open space definition, refer back to this code refer, this reference or somehow incorporate, um, so that we're not excluding things like tennis courts or dare I say pickleball courts, um, is that, I, I guess if you could help me with that a little bit, so I'm clear on where your, your head, I think I understand, but.
Yeah, maybe if you go back to your other one, uh, uh, land area that's not occupied by buildings, parking areas, other paved surfaces, excluding walkways and trails, uh, or as defined in section blah, 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 just the multifamily, uh, or. Does that make sense? Something like that?
Well, that, we have so many other places that open space is captured.
But, but the definition of it is only in these two spots, I think.
And I'm not even sure that the definitions, for instance, for the forty percent on, for, yeah, for the hotel thing that you guys just went through that I, uh, didn't partake in. But I'm not sure, I mean, forty percent is open space in a situation like that. And, but in a multifamily use, it's a little bit different because we specifically say fifty percent of it has to be usable by the community, well, the, the residential community that it's serving. So we're kind of saying two different things there. Um, and maybe the, the other fifty percent of the multifamily falls into the same category as the, um, forty percent of the, like, you'll have to flip back through Leila, I think it was the three point oh, point three, point, three, zero, three, zero?
Yeah, four, yeah, I think that's right. It's, it's, you know, that's what this definition is really trying to get at is, um, if they're not putting in act, so the multifamily definition is, is really by and large saying, we're going to require you to have active uh, accessible open space, so it can't just be a forest. Right, it's natural area, like, it's got to be accessible to some extent to the residents. This definition, if you apply to a situation like we just had, doesn't make that requirement.
Right.
And I think that's what we want.
I think that's what we want as well. I mean, it's kind of what I want. I don't know what we want, but.
The collective we, but I think what I'm hearing, uh, Bert say is that we also don't want to exclude active, um, and I actually had some language to propose that it could say exclude, you know, or other accessible outdoor recreational facility. And so that might be one way to address the gazebo, the pickleball court, so that if we get a strictly forty percent, um, project that isn't multifamily, which is very likely, PUDs, that's what they require. And maybe they have a common, you know, common area that has a gazebo, adding a little bit of language like that allows you to say, yeah, their pickleball court and their gazebo does count towards their open space, but they're not required to have it, which is the difference between, um, uh, three point one, blah, blah, four, and the multifamily, like the multifamily saying you have to have it.
Well, I, I think I agree with what you just said. But I'm going to say it again, just so that.
By all means.
I, I, I think what you said was for the forty percent application for the SRR or, or the, the bump in, uh, units for the SRR or for a PUD, um, or let's call it a PUD that isn't multi housing. I think it's open space. It's.
That's right.
Um, it's not anything with any kind of impervious surface or it's for all those things. Uh, pleasure, recreation, ornament, light, air, including preservation of natural features, topography of the siding, including protection of environmentally sensitive areas, that is as it applies to our forty percent. Um, fifty percent of that in a multi, in a multi residential application can be all these other things, um, pickleball or gazebo or pool at, and maybe not at the discretion of the planning commission, um, or maybe at the discretion of the planning commission. I don't know, I don't know how we deal with it. But something along those lines, but definitely nothing enclosed without explicit approval by the planning commission.
Yeah, you know, just, is, it seems to me that the key question that you're raising, John, is that for a PUD, let's say it's a hundred units of a PUD or something, I don't know if there's even that much land in, in Manzanita, very likely they would want to have some recreation space as part of that. And, uh, you wouldn't want to preclude that, I don't think, in a PUD, so the really key question is for everything other than, um, you know, multifamily, is the commission want it to be all this definition, which would preclude, you know, pave the, the pickleball court and things like that. And I, I'd say we probably don't. I think we should allow that.
Well, I would, I would take the opposite approach and exclude it unless we specifically say, yeah, that's great. We like your application. Because without, um, my, my history with this, uh, is that it'll, somebody will take advantage of it if we don't, you know, if we don't have the planning comm, and I've done it myself, so I, I, I have seen this particular ene, enemy in a in a pogo sense and I am it, so I know what we're talking about here. Well, what I would like to see, the planning commission have some control over what we do in the strict forty percent. Um.
Well, uh, can I?
Kind of go with Bert on the fifty percent of the forty percent for a multifamily.
Yeah, can I, can I jump in here and say that the, um, this definition that would apply to all the different places that open space is mentioned, except for multifamily where there's an additional fifty percent and, uh, community engagement area that is required. It, it already doesn't allow occup, you know, uh, buildings, um, and I, I think I'm just, what I'd like to do is, um, for my own brain, go through each of those areas where open space, not today, not altogether, this is my own exercise, would be to go and look at each one of those spaces and apply this definition to it and see if it makes sense, see what the, what the, um, where the loopholes are, because you're right, John, somebody always, um, pushes us abs, absolutely to the limit. And they're entitled to, that's, that's, um, whatever, whatever our written word says is what, um, you know, what we have to stick to, so we all, yeah, we, we're going to get, um, screwed somewhere here in the future, but, you know, all we can do is do the best we can, um, and try to try to apply it as generally as we possibly can, but I think that we're on the right track here. Um, by adding the further conditions to the multifamily and maybe we might want to think about, you know, in other situations where a planned unit development is proposed and there's clustering and there's a, a request for, um, you, you know, forty percent, uh, open space where that becomes an issue, does this work? Or would the multifamily version work better? And I think we kind of need to think through those.
I've got a suggestion, uh, is, uh, if you just added, if you got rid of the or between areas or other and just put a comma there, uh, land area that's not occupied, buildings, parking areas, other paid services excluding walkways and trails or as approved by the planning commission.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with that. That, that's kind of where I was headed.
Okay.
Can we back up if I may? I, I'm not sure I'm following all of John and Bert's commentary, but, um, we're talking about an exception to the density requirement for this. we're talking about an exception to the density requirement for this, the SRR zone. And we're going to allow greater density if they set aside forty percent as open space. I do not want that open space to be tennis courts, swimming pools, pickleball courts and other structures. The forty percent should be something that retains the character of that area, which is semi rural. And um it should be, in my view, park-like. And it should be, you know, in a natural state or landscape or something to that effect. I don't want to see that we're going to allow somebody to increase the density beyond what's normally required by allowing them to cut down the forest and build a bunch of tennis courts in this place. So that that's to the extent this, we're creating an open space definition that would allow all those other structures. I I think we're going in the wrong direction. Um, I and I'm I'm also concerned that if this definition allows for those things and we're saying that forty percent can be that, then they they in the Manzanita lofts thing, they could have taken all of that which they were calling leaving in a natural area and turn it all into tennis and pickleball courts? And get the higher density? That.
Uh, Tom, I think what we're saying is that uh it by adding or is approved by the planning commission that each project would be viewed by the commission on its merits.
With the starting point being what you just said, Tom.
Yes, right.
I uh I'd love to have that kind of power. I think that broad of discretion is too much that we we should give clear direction in the zoning ordinance to what is and what is not permitted, not allowing us case by case to say, yeah, you can put in a bunch of tennis courts here, but the next one over, no, we're not going to let you. Um.
Well, uh, you know, uh, I guess I I feel that the or you've got it in the multifamily uh section that there's a commission discretion on approval.
Or just indoor? Well. Um. Yeah, it's in the multifamily and there is some inconsistency between those two things here. But but once again, we are creating an exception to the general rule of density. And we should get something in return, especially if we're taking out what has been open space as a public or private park area. Uh, I would, I I would like a definition that ensures that it would be park-like and uh a limitation on impervious surfaces, not just pays, because I'm thinking of, you know, cobblestones and bricks. Um. But structures as well.
But so a gazebo, for instance, wouldn't be permitted?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I I would allow park benches that are not, as the structure's definition says, attached to the ground and other things for the use and enjoyment of the area.
Uh, Leila would uh essentially, if someone wanted with this definition, if they wanted to do a uh say a playground, uh, you know, uh, with slides and, you know, all that kind of stuff, or a gazebo. Um, you know, or uh a wading pool. Uh, they would need to get a variance to do that?
My interpretation would be no, because we didn't exclude that specifically. Um, and the definition refers to land. So not pervious natural land, but land that's dedicated to pleasure, recreation. So to me, a park could qualify as that. Um, you know, I did some research on this too, and looking at the American Planning Association's resources and we're not the only ones who struggle with this because folks are like, does a pool and a community rec center count as a park or not? Um, so we necessarily left this vague and to allow for flexibility. Um. So if you narrow it um to what Tom's talking about, then yeah, I suppose you would have to apply for a variance, but I would also agree with the discussion that it is in conflict with you know, what we're asking of multifamily and the multifamily element of the zoning ordinance, we're saying those things are okay. Um, I understand what Tom's getting at. Um, but I think there's a couple of commissioners here and some that aren't present that would suggest that some of these recreational uh activities should count. Um, so this really kind of discussion you guys need to figure out. I mean, I think allowing some flexibility to allow for, you know, I I don't personally object to things like um, a gazebo in the middle of a park area. Um, I don't think that's incongruent with the intent of clustering in an open space. You're actually trying to get people to engage with the landscape and then a landscape where we get rain six months out of the year. Um. That doesn't seem incongruent with the goal of that, but so that's one, and that's generally the feedback I heard. And then the definitions that we looked at that were pointed to as good examples also didn't exclude those kinds of resources.
Well.
Does anybody think that the Manzanita Lofts proposal, I mean, the second one with the so-called park would be more um enticing to the community if instead of some of that greenway, they had a tennis court or an outdoor swimming pool? Or a pickleball court?
I I would say absolutely not. We ca- and I go back to, you know, we took out park and we took out golf course and we're talking about open space. To me, unless the the code or the planning commission or somebody says otherwise, open space means open space. Um, as in natural or specifically ornamental landscaping or open recreation type areas. I mean, my favorite park is the one that you can get out there and run around and kick a ball and run a dog and that sort of thing. I'm not a swing set guy and haven't been for sixty years. But um you know, I know there, we have parks that have swing sets and stuff like that. Um. And I know there are multifamily developments that that like to encourage social interaction and things like that. And maybe, for instance, in the Manzanita pines, when you're way the heck away from downtown where social interaction typically happens. I know this is an issue. Um. To Tom. Um, you we take fifty percent of our forty percent open space and we make it uh amenable to social interaction and recreation, that sort of thing. But as far as, you know, going from fourteen units to twenty eight units in a in a in a, in a, in a small development like uh classic cottages, I think open space should be open space. No impervious surfaces, including tennis courts and swimming pools, which to me are both pretty impervious.
We we are taking the rule that says open space is public or private park. And and we're turning it into non-park-like open space. I think we're going backwards.
Well, Tom, I I think that the problem with the Manzanita Lofts was the definition of a park, right? There's all sorts of different kinds of parks. There's nap parks, there's parks with tennis courts and pickleball courts, all that kind of stuff. I think the key here is I'd hate to preclude. I would agree, you know, it it seems like uh uh for that particular project, although I wasn't part of that decision process, pickleball court or whatever probably wasn't the right solution. But it would seem, you know, too bad to not be able to have a children's play area or, you know, the gazebo, that kind of stuff. So I'd hate for someone to have to apply for a variance for uh something like that. Uh, so uh maybe Leila can figure out a way that we don't have uh giant uh uh tennis courts, but there's some minor things that could happen as part of the open space. Uh, maybe a more fundamental question is, as we've gone through the discussion uh is uh, and it's probably something uh our esteemed chair was gonna review as it goes through the whole code. Is that if we say this about open space, then there's that telegraphed through all the code? And then it's only in the uh multifamily that is in conflict with this that does require the active recreational stuff. So anyway.
Um. But another thing that we might want to consider is referring back to the comprehensive plan. And it has a section about nature in it that might be applicable in this situation. Um. And it does talk about the natural uh state of the Manzanita area and how we should try to as much as possible preserve it. Um, so I would say as a starting point, you know, let's, does this um preserve or enhance any of the natural features or topography of the specific site? Um. Environmentally, I'm reading off of the staff's proposal here. I'm uh environmentally sensitive areas, absolutely. You know, we're not going to pave over those with a tennis court. And we're in an area that really, you know, it, people enjoy the outside as much as anything by just being outside. And I think, to me, that's, I know, um, it normally my natural reaction would be, oh, let's put in a, you know, I'm a, I can, I can do something better than nature. Let's put in a little zoomy thing here and some planting over here and a big open space over here. I don't think so in this case, though. Um, in in the case of Manzanita, just the natural environment is um, the best we can do. So I would propose that that would be the starting point of of any uh definition. And in the case of multifamily that has a specific need for encouraging social interaction because it's a big residential area, especially if it's away from town, I would say, okay, let's try to get people together and socialize, but in in either a recreational or purely social uh sort of way.
Yeah, and I think, so I feel like I'm hearing some I mean, generally some consensus here that I think the
Really?
This, the sticking point is, I don't think anyone's advocating to use the forty percent standard to build a bunch of um tennis courts. Actually, I don't think that's what's happening here at all. I feel like what I've heard is some flexibility to allow for um, what would be the appropriate word, but just sort of appropriate recreational uses. So, you know, like if you think about a swing set, there's sawdust underneath that. It's not usually under uh a paved or pervious surface. Um. And I don't, I also don't think that there's, that the multifamily um requirement is um in conflict with this definition. It's rather additive to get at what John was just saying. Um, so maybe the focus of your discussion can be, and and Bert, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to make sure we're getting your comments accurately reflected here, that we're not talking about you know, sport courts dominating the um open space. I think that from those of you that are talking, there's general consensus that it should be pervious open space. Um. But that maybe there's some small scale recreational type facilities, whether it's a a rain structure or a playground equipment. Um, having some flexibility to allow those things. Um. Am I? Am I
Yeah.
reflecting back what I'm hearing accurately? I just want to make sure we're moving forward instead of spinning around the same.
Well, uh, I just, uh, putting it there in uh anticipation. Mostly, and I I don't really, because I'm a newbie, don't understand that the nature of the uh amount of land that's available for development. Uh, but uh, you know, the the multifamily would apply to, you know, five unit multifamily building, I suspect. Right? That requirement or a five hundred unit multifamily building. Uh, and if you had uh a planned unit development, which is fairly common, that didn't actually have multifamily in it, but let's say it was a hundred units uh of uh uh, you know, of of family housing. Uh, you know, and not and saying that there's not the flexibility to provide for active social space and that kind of a development seems not quite right. Um, but, you know, I I I I definitely don't want to preclude a uh swing sets and gazebos and things like that in a planned unit development.
But if if I may, let me let let me say this. We are talking about the SRR zone. Not all of the other zones. And and that area now is mostly undeveloped land, excluding the the golf course and the the development around it. Um. It looking at the purposes, the statement of purpose at the start of the zoning ordinance, it says, among other things, is to protect and enhance the character and appearance of the city as it currently exists. I i- if we are going to start making changes in a rule relating to the SRR zone, we should make sure that we don't change the appearance of the of that area as it currently exists. Um.
Well, if it's undeveloped land, you're you're gonna change it, you know?
Yes, you're gonna change it, but because they can develop it, but if if we're gonna give them more dwellings, we ought we ought to try to the extent possible to keep the forty percent they set aside as something characteristic of what is there now.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you there, Tom. I, I mean, I, in an ideal world, the way I would like to see it, sure, I would, I would rather not have any trees ever cut down and have everything built around them. But if I were a developer building a high-end condominium development and I wanted to make make it be as close to Versailles as I possibly could with very structured fountains and specific lands, you know, very you know, landscaping, and if they're gonna make it a gated community and it's, which is allowed still. I, I don't think we can handcuff a developer to leaving everything the way it is now.
We're not handcuffing them, we're taking the current handcuffs off. And what are we getting in return? If you're going to take, if you're gonna allow them to increase the density and then turn the other forty percent into
Playground.
Recreational development and structures. What are you getting in return?
What if we were to say that open space, that we were to add to it into this definition that we're looking at on the screen, something to the effect of, you know, open space refers to land that's generally contiguous and may be devoted to a combination of purposes, pleasure, recreation, ornament, light, and air. Or, you know, and including preservation of natural features or topography. So that if there's a potentially environmentally sensitive area, that has to be preserved as part of the definition. But that if you were to deny, even at the hotel complex that we looked at, if in, you know, in the middle of one of those open spaces, he wanted to put a gazebo so that people could with a table in it, so that people could go and eat outside in the shade on a very hot day, I, I, I wouldn't deny him that.
But let's, let's be clear, I'm, I'm willing to create a gazebo exception.
Add playground exception, please, Tom.
But, but what I see here is refers to land that is generally contiguous and may devoted to the purpose of pleasure and recreation. Five contiguous pickleball courts meet that definition.
That's, that's why I was suggesting that should include elements plural of pleasure, recreation, ornament, light, and air. So that it a developer would have to show how all of those work or how they work in combination. Does that, does that give you the discretion you would like?
Well, I think, could I jump in? I've thought, Tom mentioned earlier, you know, if we change paved to impervious, then that excludes contiguous pickleball courts.
Or any pickleball courts.
Does that exclude playgrounds?
Most playgrounds are not made on impervious surfaces.
Were when I was a kid.
Oh, I know, me too.
Even the new ones with the rubbery substance that my kids played on so that if they fell off the swing, they bounced or
Yeah, I'm not an expert, but I don't think those are impervious. They actually absorb. But I could be wrong about that, so I'll say I don't know.
I'll try again, you know, land not occupied by buildings, parking areas, or others similar paved surfaces, tooting walkways and trails. And small gazebos or player, or children's playgrounds or something like that. Get more specific.
We can work with that.
But could we also, I kind of hate to do this, but add a definition of parking areas to include the parking space, which is a defined term, and parking strips? And areas for egress and ingress, whether pervious, whether paved or not. So if there's gravel.
Parking areas?
Pardon me?
Don't we have a definition of parking areas in the code?
We have a definition of parking space, which is a single space of a certain dimensions.
But it also includes approach spaces and widths and things like that.
The parking space doesn't. So I'm, I'm, in other words, I'm trying, I'm trying to remove the idea that this, you know, the one-foot strip between the, the bumper of the, you know, the tire bump and, you know, the sidewalk doesn't count as open space.
I thought I, well.
So that, so I, I think, you know, we would have to kind of either add it.
Flip back through Leila's presentation, there is a piece about it does not include the landscape strip between parking spaces.
Yeah, I recall seeing something good to that effect. It was more
Covered by the generally contiguous, because those parking strips would be
Right.
not contiguous.
Right.
So I think we want to be mindful of how specific we start to get, because like the broadness is helpful, it's also problematic. It's like six of one half. You know, we can, so what I can do is come up with some language that reflects, and there was another example, the sort of like parking areas, you know, including access and driveways, you know, that sort of thing. And come up with a succinct way to capture, I, I understand what you're saying. I think that's a good, valid suggestion. I think I tried to cover it with parking areas. But we can, I can massage that a little bit more to come up with something a little more specific. I think, and I'm not sure that there's a hundred percent consensus on this, so I want you guys to sort that out, but it sounds like oh, I had the perfect word in my head, but you know, sort of related structures or something to that effect that would capture things like small play areas or gazebos, covered areas. You know, I keep thinking of I used to live by Mount Taper Park and there's, you know, those kind of structures where you kind of hide out and that were wonderful when it was pouring down rain or hiking through. So I feel like
I was just looking at the definition of yard. And it says, "An open space on a lot which is unobstructed from the ground upward except for fences, retaining walls, passive landscaping features, and accessory structures," is accessory structures
Oh.
The kind of term you're looking for.
I think that mine have actually been Yeah, so an accessory structure that actually might work really well is a use or structure incidental and subordinate to the main use of the property and located on the same lot as the main use. And so
So a, a bench, a gazebo, something that is for peo- for people to use while enjoying the balance of the open space, which is there for some other purpose.
Yeah, I like that.
Not the not the bench where you put your pickleball gear while you're waiting your turn on the court.
That's on another lot, Tom, that pickle.
So they have fifty, sixty percent dedicated to open space. They can build their pickleball court on the non-forty. How do folks feel about that? I think that's a nice I think that's an elegant way to get at it, is sort of an accessory
Yeah.
structure.
I think the, there wouldn't be a storage unit or something like that, because that's gonna get covered in this second sentence, right?
Yeah, because you could really argue the intent is, as we've really all kind of described, is for open space, it's for the open.
It already excludes buildings, and buildings wouldn't include anything that includes personal property or other. So I, I think building covers that.
Okay.
And would that include Karen's Versailles Fountain?
That would be an accessory structure, I believe. And that, that's what we're calling, you know, the, some of the people have fireplaces. We had a discussion a few years ago because all of a sudden fireplaces, not fire pits, but fire, fireplaces started appearing around town in front yards. And there was a complaint that those, you know, shouldn't be allowed because there are structures and we don't allow any structures in the front yard of a, of a property. So, you know, so
I mean, like a pizza oven?
I would make sure that that auxiliary thing doesn't pop up anywhere else in the code, too.
Accessory structures.
Accessory structures, yeah.
Well, it's defined, and so I think that's that's helpful because it's, it makes it pretty clear. It's gotta be I'll read it again, just for good measure, incidental and subordinate to the main use of the property and located on the same lot as the main use. So I think the incidental and subordinate makes it pretty clear.
Well, and if we can, you know, further that with the definition of a structure, because I think we have to look at structure and then an accessory structure, but structures or anything constructed or built which requires location on the ground or is attached to something having a location on the ground, including covered patios, fences, and walls, but not including normal plants and landscaping materials, paved outdoor areas, walks, driveways, or similar improvements. I, I think that
Well, that's actually an interesting point, Karen, because I'm thinking about, you know, we have some areas that have Classic Streets actually one of them that have topography issues. And so if you built a retaining wall and that's in the middle of your, you know, the retaining wall is kind of necessary for safety or for whatever reason, but it's in your contiguous area of open space by including structures, we would exclude that. And I wonder if that's I feel like the
Say fences and retaining walls?
Yeah, it does.
Would that be considered a landscaping material, though? A retaining wall?
Yes and no. You, you could make it a landscape feature or you could just specifically do a you know, a functional pour a chunk of concrete. Although even that, you know, you could argue is landscape, but
But it may be a structure, but it's also an accessory structure.
Yeah, it's also needed and probably probably has a definition in the building code, too, not just the zoning ordinance.
I mean, do we think that they could reread the definition of building again? But a structure other than a mobile home built for the support, shelter, or enclosure of persons, animals, chattels, or property of any kind and having a fixed connection to the ground. Do you think that sufficiently addresses your concern, Karen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think that would leave out storage units and storage sheds and, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah. Easily. It's really captured in that definition of building, right? So So this is, this is good, this is progress. So I think I have two kind of, and we can keep talking, but I just kind of want to summarize where we're at and then we can see what else we have to do, but just some clarity around paved areas with respect to parking areas and making sure there's a little bit more massaging of the language there and make sure we're capturing the driveways and circulation, et cetera. And I think I can do that pretty easily. And then the second thing is adding an accessory structure in here so that it's allowable, something that's allowable. And I think we've all agreed that that gets us to the things that we're mainly concerned about. And that the real overall goal of this definition, and I think it applies across the code, right, is open space is open space, it's natural sort of area. So I can, I can work on the definition and make those adjustments.
And were you gonna change paved to impervious?
What do folks think about that? Because that is, I do wonder about that, like, do you not want, you know, pavers? If someone has a pathway, I guess a pathway would be a walkway or a trail. But certainly, I don't have any objection to that, although I haven't put a ton of thought into what it could cause, what problems it could cause.
Well, there, there's three architects on this commission, right? And I'm the one lawyer. I don't, I don't know what surfaces there's what variety there are. Does paved capture everything that we would worry about?
Paved doesn't, paved doesn't include concrete.
Is that true? I would call concrete a paved surface.
Well, it goes to, you have this definition of those things in the code, which probably don't have it, right? So
I think, I think impervious is, is more inclusive with regards to the surfaces you're trying to eliminate.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, what happens if they use pervious pavement?
I was gonna just throw that in as a, you know, the heart, hearts in building uses for their, their parking spaces are pervious.
Yeah, we actually want to do that.
Yes, actually, I agree. So, but I, I think parking areas I, I regard pervious or not pervious, that, that excludes where vehicles are stored. It's, it's the other paved surfaces. So I, you know, other impervious surfaces, I think, would make more sense to me.
Well, yeah, and then
But that would eliminate a pickleball court if it's an you know, an incidental small portion of the property that's, that's left open. So, I don't know.
Can I add something?
Yeah, please.
I did a brief dive into Webster's with regards to open space, and one thing jumped out at me, and it said, "Physical space independent of what occupies it." Whereas a park is an enclosed tract piece and would include probably structures within it, like a pickleball court, tennis court, what have you. So I think if we keep the, this, the definitions separate between, or we're redefining what a park is and what an open space is, and clearly define what the difference is, maybe we're, we're gonna get there.
Do you have a suggestion on how you would, how you would word that, Phil?
No. Because there are so many viewpoints on the, on the planning commission right now. I think it's gonna take a while to to come up with that. And I think that's part of the process.
Right, okay. It's a good point.
Well, I, I thought we were pretty, getting closer because Well, I, I thought we were pretty getting closer because we were gonna allow playgrounds, you know, kids' play areas and gazebos if they're incidental and accessory. Uh, but we're not doing the big pickleball complex in the open space for this definition. Uh.
Well, so long as the surfaces aren't impervious.
Yeah, we can, we can work some language in here to clarify that. I think Karen's right that the reference to parking areas, pervious or impervious is out. And then I think putting in some language that refers to impervious surface um, or pervious surface as being in. Um, and then adding some language about the accessory structure. I think that'll get us there. Pretty, you know, closer than, closer than we are today. Um, but I think we're pretty close. I, I do want to say I got some notes from folks that we weren't gonna define park cuz that, if we're having a hard time with open space, uh, defining a park is gonna be a whole other endeavor. And I'm not necessarily sure that that's, I think that was the intent of removing the language from the PUD standard referencing a park, because as I showed in my last presentation to the commission, city has like a whole plethora of what counts as a park and what doesn't. And like I said, I've done some reading on this and that's like, there's a lot of debate on what constitutes park and what doesn't. And, um, I reached out to some folks who've been doing this stuff. You know, I've been doing it twenty years, but I reached out to some folks that have been doing it a lot longer than me and they were like, don't do it, don't define it. Um, so I think maybe can we just chop off one bit at a time? And I think the real priority here is, and for good reason, identifying open space. And I think that I think we, I mean, I think we're, we've got a there there, um, with a little bit of wordsmithing. Um, I can take a crack at it, send it out to the commission. You can reply to just me directly cuz we want to avoid any kind of serial meeting of any kind, um, and give me your feedback. And then at the next commission meeting, um, yeah, kind of like what you did that last time. You guys gave me some feedback. That was a great starting point for me to draft up this. Um, I think we can get there. And then, you know, short of having it adopted as the ordinance, it will be a good guideline for you, um, should an application come in before this actually gets officially adopted and it gives you. And, you know, we can communicate this to applicants as well. Um, but unless I'm missing something, I feel like you've made some really good progress. I think the feedback's really solid. Um, I think with those kind of three, um, changes, and I'll, I'll read them again so we're all on the same page, which is clarification around paved areas. So that we're clear, we're excluding parking lots and anything's associated with parking lots. The second being allowing limited, but specific, you know, accessory structures. And I think we all agree that the definition of accessory structure provides enough guidance for you and for staff to communicate to applicants what we mean by that. Because you have to remember, staff come to, I mean, applicants come to us first. And so we have a good sense of like, and they're like, hey, I got a pickleball court and like this other sport court. We're gonna be like, yeah, no dice. But if you do have like a nice gazebo and the beautiful Versailles Fountain, you know, you can probably pitch that and they might buy off on it. So I think the accessory structure is, is a great suggestion. And then third is just clarifying, we're talking about pervious landscape. So, you know, again, um, adding some language in there that limits impervious surfaces um, in the forty percent area. That's a great direction, I think, for, um, for me to revise this definition. I don't think it's gonna lengthen it all that much. I think it's just a bit of elegant wordsmithing. And then, um, that provides staff and I think applicants with a really clear understanding of what you're looking for um, with respect to, um, the forty percent set aside for clustering. And then we get to work with the applicants and make, you know, do the best that we can to get them to put an application together that um, doesn't include the things that we don't want. So I think this is great feedback and I can definitely work with this and shoot this out to the commission. Again, just respond back to me, not to the rest of the commission. And then I will summarize all of that feedback like I did today and come back with a revised definition, um, at the next meeting.
Okay.
We all.
Well, I, I think that's perfect. It's a, it's a great, I, I think we're getting close to it, but we are the, what, I can't remember, we're supposed to be the public input commission or group. So, um, I'm hoping that we can maybe invite, um, the public to also comment on this and submit those comments to you, Leila, not to the commission in general, so that, um, you know, we might have missed something that somebody else, um, can, can help clarify for us. So may I invite the public to also submit comments on the, the definition that we're working with right now.
Yeah. And if I could just make a plea to send it to planning@ci.mansanita.or.us and then I can have staff summarize it and send it to me. If you send it to me directly, that's fine. Um, and then you can also, Karen, it's at your discretion, but take public comment at our next meeting as well and get that feedback. I think that's a great suggestion. Um, so.
Okay.
Uh.
Please.
Yeah. So, Leila, it, it looks like what we'll be doing is deleting the park and golf course reference from four A, the rule, and then adding a definition of open space. Wh- what I'm wondering is if that new definition of open space would affect the workforce housing proposal that we were talking about at a prior meeting?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
And so if so, should there be a third part to this ordinance change that would create an exception for affordable housing?
Hmm.
Uh, uh, yeah, I know that.
I don't know. I think that's a worthy, um, matter for the commission to discuss. And you'd certainly then, I mean, the, so the fifty percent requirement is, applies to, um, all, all open space and multifamily. So you're saying should there be an exception to the fifty percent active space for affordable housing? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I guess what, what I'm, um, the presentation was for affordable housing in the SRR zone, right? And we're now making some changes here. And I'm wondering if these changes would make that that proposal unworkable because they would not be able to meet the new open space requirement, in which case it may be reasonable for us to consider an exception for affordable housing that we would then have to put into the rule to take them out of the changes we're otherwise making. Does that make, you following me?
Yeah, I, I hear you. I, I guess I would say that I don't, I don't think that what we've defined here would, I think actually what it does is, is it provides them with a heck of a lot more clarity about what we mean by open space.
Right.
And since we haven't made any changes to the, the multifamily requirement, I, I don't, I don't think it would have, um, a negative impact. In fact, I think the, the clarity of the definition will, um, be helpful, but I, you know, exceptions for affordable housing usually are as a result of some financial implication. So like one exception that I'm a big fan of is parking reductions because parking is actually a huge cost to housing affordability.
Right.
Um, but I, I love that you're thinking that way. And I think that that's something we can certainly.
Well, I'm just, before we get too far down this road, if, if, well, we'll see your language. At some point, we want to present the language to, to those developers and say, does, does this change anything that you're?
Yeah, I can actually do that between now and our next meeting as well. I think it's always good to get stakeholder feedback. Um.
Oh, I think, I think one thing, just let me jump in, Bert, and then one thing that, you know, if the developers want to request a variance as part of the proposal, one of the criteria for a variance is that it must have some public purpose. There must be some valuable um, reason, a, a reason that, that we should make this change is that it, it does, it benefits the community somehow. And um, you know, I don't want to say yes or no one way or the other to that particular development, but that is a possibility that the commission has a little bit of um, flexibility in the, in a variance.
I, I thought about that, too, but, um, a woman with whom I'm very familiar who works in the field of affordable housing and land use tells me you do not want to go that route because affordable housing developers will just walk away. They do not want to go through a variance process which opens up the door to every everybody in the area who doesn't want it. And, and so the, the exception, she proposed to me that I proposed to you, an exception for affordable housing to any rules changes here, if we think these rule changes are gonna make it more difficult. The way to do that is to put it into the ordinance, not to make it a variance because they'll, they won't bother. They, they won't put up with the time and expense of fighting.
Well, we're about to go through that process and I would concur. I think that's exactly right. And my mentor has told me that our code should make what you want to have happen the easiest thing to do. So when you're requiring affordable housing to go through multiple variances, then that is a problem. That creates uncertainty. Um, there's a number of reasons why you want to make that. I just, I would like to think about it a little more and perhaps we all can. I don't think that this definition that we've come up with does that. Um, if it did, um, I think you're entirely correct that, that would be something that we should consider. Um, but I actually think what it does is it makes it a lot more certain about what we're talking about when we talk about open space and just having talked to the developer. That was their key concern is what are you talking about? What is open space? And so I think um, we've done a good job of defining that and I will do some outreach between now and the next commission meeting um, to verify that assumption. And if I'm wrong, then let's talk. I think that's a great. I love the, the mindset, but what we want to have happen should be the easiest thing to do. And our code update that we're about to get into will, will start to help us do that. So, thanks for that.
Um, that's a pretty good segue into, I, I wanted to add one brief item to the agenda, um, to talk about, um, uh, we need a, um, liaison from the planning commission to, um, work with Leila and with the liaison from city council to develop, um, Leila wants to call it CPAC. I'm, I'm not sure I'm happy with that language. It has connotations, but a comprehensive plan advisory committee. And Leila, I don't know if you want to add, add something to that, but, but, um.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, thanks, Karen. So, um, one of the things that I'd like to do as part of our comprehensive plan is actually have a community advisory committee that would actually be the first line of review and analysis of, um, proposed policies and everything before they actually get to the planning commission. And so of the very many cop plans I've worked on, I've always had committee like that. So they sort of represent the community at large, but also include liaisons from the planning commission, usually the decision-making body, um, depending on the size of the city. And, um, sometimes some subject matter experts, so usually folks from, uh, DLCD, et cetera. And so, um, I'd like to get somebody from, a volunteer who'd be interested in working, um, with me and liaison from the city council to discuss kind of what the makeup of that committee would be. Um, and then that person would also participate in the, um, formation of questions that, um, we have a pretty, um, let's say detailed process to select committee members that, so that criteria would need to be approved by city council and then go through the selection process. Um, and then I think ultimately serve as the, the liaison for the, the planning, um, for the conference of plan advisory committee. And we're missing two members today. And so I kind of hoped to get a volunteer today, but I feel like it kind of puts those other two members at a bit of a disadvantage. Um, so Karen, if you're comfortable. What's that? Or an advantage? Let's nominate one of them who's not here to serve. Um, so anyway, I'll defer to the chair. Um, but I was going to actually have city council, uh, discuss this in October, which is before your next meeting and I'll select somebody from the city council to serve on that committee. And so we can either do it now or come back in October, um, and, and do that, but yeah, we're getting ready. Like, stuff's happening and I need help.
How, how about this? Um, instead of putting anyone on the spot, we can, I can reach out to Frank and to Lee and, and explain to them what we're looking for. And if any of you are interested in, in that, let me know. And I'll, um, kind of, we'll, we'll see where we stand. If, if everyone volunteers, then, then we may have to do another process, but, um, is, is that reasonable?
Yeah. Can I recommend a pickleball challenge?
I prefer a golf challenge.
I, I prefer a swing set or slide challenge.
Come in. I'll, I'll do that.
I want a fountain from Versailles.
I'll sit in the gazebo with anybody.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, um, yeah, it, it's, I don't, the time commitment is huge right off the bat, but, um, we do need to get underway and developing the, the criteria for the committee, um, mi- members at large is gonna be the biggest piece of this that we need to do coming up. So let me know if you're interested in, um, in helping and, and I'll, and I'll help weed through it and make sure that Lee and Frank also have an opportunity.
Quick question. Uh, Leila, you sent out an email regarding traffic and or sidewalks earlier in the month.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And it did say you were gonna do something with the council or the commission. I can't remember exactly what it said, but.
Yeah, um, thank you. And thank you, uh, I think Bert especially for providing comment on the TSP, um, ordinance language. So I didn't catch it until, once you start really diving into it, that there was reference to sidewalks citywide, which is totally incongruent with, um, our physical characteristics and, um, our infrastructure. So what I'm working on right now, and we've gotten, we've been, we've made a number of changes actually to that document, is I'm gonna update that memo and provide you with a sort of red line strikeout and updated version of that. And so expect that before the next planning commission meeting. And then we'll have our initial, um, discussion about the ordinance language, um, for that. I just haven't, I just haven't had a chance to complete it. And I just got some additional comment from staff um, that necessitated a few other tweakings to, to the language. Um, but we did strike out pretty much everything in that section from two to seven is gone. Um, and we left in number one and number eight and made some editor, and made some changes to the language in that. Um, it was actually in- incompatible with the TSP. So I caught it in the TSP. I didn't catch it in the ordinance language until, um, after I sent it. So, um, there's no incongruence between it now. So.
Okay.
But thanks for reminding me that. We're working on it.
Um, are there any updates? Anything coming down the pipe? Do we have anything in our November? November. See, I'm already in November. Let's forget about October. If it's coming up in October, Scott?
Yeah, at this time, I don't have any applications. Um, I do anticipate that they'll be bringing the workforce housing to us November, December.
Okay.
And city hall will be coming to you soon as well. So, um, yay.
We're talking design review for city hall?
Yes, ma'am.
Woo-hoo.
Mm-hmm.
Wait. Okay, um, with that, uh, unless anyone. Okay, um, with that, uh, unless anyone has an objection, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
Thanks so much. It was really helpful and productive.